Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, July 24, 2017. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Here.
Martin, Pollocka?
Here.
Mayor Porcham Piana?
Here.
And Mayor Coulter.
Here, thank you. We have a quorum, and Councilman Martin is under the weather this evening, and I would ask for unanimous consent to excuse him.
I move to approve, Councilmember Dan Eppson's.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. What is council's pleasure on the agenda this evening?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
So, moved by Pollocka and supported by Leaks May. Any discussion? Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted as presented. Moving on now to presentations, and we have three presentations this evening, and it's a special pleasure of mine to introduce the former mayor of the city of Ferndale, three-term mayor of the city of Ferndale, and now his honorable judgeship from, well, from our district court, but you preside in the court in Hazel Park, right Chuck, your honor?
That's right. Thank you.
Welcome back!
Thank you, I appreciate that. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you this evening. As the mayor has indicated, I am Judge Chuck Geddard of the Hazel Park Division of the 43rd District Court. Now, as you know, the 43rd District Court serves the three communities of Ferndale, Hazel Park, and Madison Heights. Likely because we're such an old district court, we have a courthouse with one judge in each of the three cities, rather than other district courts, which will have a courthouse, and each judge will have a courtroom in that courthouse. Nevertheless, each of the courthouses in the 43rd District Court is used by and serves all of the citizens of all three communities. I frequently have residents from Ferndale in my courtroom in Hazel Park for civil cases, landlord-tenant cases, small claim cases, and to serve on jury duty. Now, as you're probably aware, the building that contains the Hazel Park Division of the 43rd District Court was in very poor shape, and the courthouse portion of the building was functionally inadequate, drastically undersized, and it lacked necessary security measures. As a result, I initiated and personally supervised all phases of a construction and renovation project beginning in 2015. We broke ground last summer, and the project is now successfully complete. The goals that we have accomplished and the outcome, I believe, are exceptional. For example, among other benefits, the courthouse city hall building now looks very nice, and the original courtroom city council chambers has been completely renovated and now includes a handicap-accessible ramp.
Thank you.
The reception area for the public and the deputy court administrative area is now over three times larger and with lots of ambient light to brighten the space, and we have a new and spacious jury conference room, so that jurors who are deliberating can deliberate in comfort when they're serving on a jury, and where the court and the city can use the conference room for meetings at all other times. And finally, last but not least, by adding a second courtroom, we are experiencing a substantial increase in our efficiencies, as cases no longer take four to six or more months for a first court date to be scheduled. And when people do attend court, they are waiting less before their cases are called. I'm here tonight to invite all of you, all city staff, and all the good citizens of the city of Ferndale, to attend a ribbon-cutting ceremony and open house on Friday, August 11, from 3:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon, to celebrate completion of this historic Hazel Park courthouse and city hall construction and renovation project. The ribbon-cutting will be at 3:00 on the north side of the building, which is located at 111 East Nine Mile Road at John R. in the city of Hazel Park, and tours will be conducted immediately following the ribbon-cutting until 5:00. We will have light refreshments. I greatly hope all of you and the good citizens of the city of Ferndale will be able to attend this joyous celebration on August 11, beginning at 3:00. And again, I thank you so much for this opportunity this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks Chuck. Does anyone have any questions?
Looking forward to it.
Me too.
Looking forward to it. I'll be there.
As am I.
My only question is, has Councilman Pollocka ever been before your court? I'm just curious.
Not yet.
Not yet? All right. All right. Just checking.
First time's a charm, right?
Just checking.
There you go.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you. The second presentation is the, from the Ferndale Beautification Committee and the Ferndale Beautification Awards. And who's presenting the awards this evening? Robin? Is that you? Chair of the committee?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Evening, evening.
Oh, correct. I stand corrected. We have some wonderful winners today. There we go. All right. Okay, the first home that we have for the Beautification Awards for July is on West Hazelhurst, 1386 West Hazelhurst. And is Alice Maro and Michael here with us? Please join us. Now, I have to admit, when I was doing my research, I only saw Michael's name on the title, but then when I saw them in the parking lot and told him that I recognized him, and he said, "Alice is really the one who does all the work." And Alice said, "You may not recognize her, because generally she's upended in the garden, and so you really only see a portion of her body." So, if she turns around, you might recognize her. This house was built in 1942. They have actually lived there for 34 years, according to what I read, so that's awesome. We were very impressed with not only the fact that the planting around the house is lovely, but it extends all the way down to the roadside, and you repurposed some wonderful chunks of concrete to create a lovely little walkway to get from your car out into the yard, and it has a great collection of plant material. So, thank you, that's awesome. Did you have anything you wanted to say about it?
It's a passion.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much.
I'm curious, how long have you had the solar panels? That's intriguing to me.
I started 40 years ago.
Yeah?
The solar panels, I think, I was involved in the California Energy a long time ago. I think we put them either 30 or 40.
Early adopter.
But it's, I had different, kind of mixed feelings about it at the time, but it still works, and it's a solar heating. You know, it's not water, it's base heating.
Okay.
But no, it really works very well.
Works good?
Just for so many years, we were never home during the day, so, but no, it still works, it's very low maintenance.
Yeah.
Excellent. Look over here, we'll get a photo.
Your house is beautiful. Yeah, we'd like to get a picture of you, of course. Excellent. Excellent.
Awesome. Congratulations. The next house is in the southeast quadrant, and it is 367 College. The resident, the name is listed there, is Michael Murto, Paul Harris, and I believe Paulson Harrison even lives with them. Hayes, I'm sorry, Paul Hayes. Are you in the audience? There you go. Come on up. From what I was reading, they've been residents there for 11 years, and one of the things that we were really impressed with, not just how cool the front yard looks, but it has a wonderful side garden also. So, great job, because I saw the Zillow photo of that before you cleaned it up, and it looks nice. Very, very good. Anything you'd like to add?
I wish Paul Harrison could be here. We were having dinner at the Emory, and it just went a little long, so they're here in spirit.
Wonderful.
Who has the green thumb?
Well, it's a little bit of all of us, so the dahlias that are going to be blooming in just a couple of days in front are actually some of Paul's father's plants. So, it's a family tradition, and the peonies along the side are actually my great-grandmother's, so there's some heritage plants in the garden, which is a special for us.
That's awesome. Beautiful.
Excellent.
Very nice.
Congrats. The third house is 2842 Burdet. It's a newer home, it was actually built in 1999. The architecture, though, still blends very well with the rest of the city. Is Jacob Suter here? Okay, Jacob Suter is the owner. We were impressed simply because it was such a clean, understated, you know, everyone always thinks, "Oh, it's a beautification commission, you've got to have lots and lots of flowers in the yard." Not so. It can be just a very clean, understated presentation, and we thought he did a lovely job with that.
It's very nice.
I skipped one, I guess. There we go. The fourth house is 711 West Camborn. It was built in 1924. In fact, two of the houses that we have on the awards this month were built in 1924, and another was built in 1942, and three of the owners were named Michael on three of the four houses, so that was interesting as well. This particular one, though, we thought the way they did the bed in front of the house was very interesting. It's built, and it's sort of a terraced form, so it creates almost like stair steps up to the house, because the house itself actually sits off the ground, higher than the grade, so it makes a beautiful presentation for all the materials there. And is Michael Curtis here? Come on, Michael. Michael's been a resident there, according to the paperwork, for 19 years.
In Ferndale, 27 years.
Awesome. Very, very cool. Would you like to add anything else about the house?
It didn't look like that when I moved in. There were two pine trees that were about 50 foot tall, and you couldn't even see the house.
It's a very small house, too. It's less than, what, 1,000 square feet?
It's about, it's a little over 1,100 upstairs, yeah.
What's your secret to success?
The backyard was nothing but weeds up to here.
So, what's your secret? You've got a green thumb, clearly.
I don't know, you just, you know, I brought a load of dirt in, plant, plant, and that's kind of it.
Nice job.
Well, excellent, excellent job. Let's see, let me get yours here. All right, the next award is our annual July Cone Flower Award. For those of you who may not be aware of it, the cone flower is the city flower here in Ferndale, and so you will see it in lots of yards all over the place, but this particular corner caught our eye simply because it is in a sea of orange barrels right now, and probably won't get seen by very many people unless you're walking. And it is at 2315 Pine Crest. This home was built in 1926, and it's owned by Bob Partinski. Are you here, Bob?
There's Bob.
There you are. So, I didn't recognize you without the hat, because when I saw you working in your yard, you were down behind a bush with just a hat on. So, you've done a wonderful job with those flowers there on the corner, and quite a collection of plants there in the yard, too.
Yeah, well, this is typical of Japanese landscaping, and it's very difficult to see the house when you walk by it. And so that the, all this, the forest in front acts as a screen, it gives you more privacy. If you walk up the driveway, and then everything is wide open, the forest disappears.
Very cool.
And in the easement between the sidewalk and the street, that's, that is really a rain garden, and I saw all this rain going down the sidewalk and then into the street, down the sewer, so I tried to capture that rain as it was coming down, and lowered the garden a couple inches, but the garden raised itself up, too. But anyways, it worked. And then I, there's a trough right, like, I dug out the middle of that easement, and that created a big hill at the end of it, which I plundered some junipers on.
Right. Sort of like a burn.
And then, so the, the day release and their tree worm or monarch, they like that moisture, and they're in the middle, and the, the couple of cone flowers don't like all that moisture, and they're right at the edge of the sidewalk.
Excellent. How long have you lived there?
I'm not sure.
My question is...
Yeah, but when we moved in, I don't, but maybe 1996 or 1997.
Okay, awesome.
So, I have, I have to ask though, sir, did you know that the cone flower was the city flower? Did you know that the cone flower was the city flower when you planted them, or was that just, like, you just, like?
No, I, you know, I was, I didn't know about that, and really not, you know, to me, it's just a, just another flower.
Pretty flower.
But I'm, of course, I attended the city council meeting, and I'm very impressed with the way that everything is conducted.
Thank you, sir.
And even if you have boring topics or something interesting, I think everyone's involved, so.
Very cool.
Thank you, sir. Glad to have you here.
There you go.
Don't wait 20 years to come back.
Awesome. Thanks a lot. Congratulations.
Wonderful.
For our commercial award this particular month, we selected the Catfe Lounge, and we thought it was rather perfect, what they did to the front of that building. I know, I couldn't resist, right? It was opened in 2015, and it is part of the Ferndale Cat Shelter, which is a 501(c)(3) organization. For $10 donation, it's not required, but they really do want the money if you can help them with that. You can come over and hang out with the kitties and enjoy some beverages, and we thought they did a lovely job with the front of that building. Is there someone here from the Catfe? Anyone? No? Okay. Well, that concludes the awards, but we have a couple of announcements. If you are interested in submitting any nominations for August, those need to be in to us by August 15. And then the block beautification nominations, yes, you can enter in as an entire block, and we got a little play on Facebook when we posted that sign there. A few people with graphic art skills had fun with the sign, is due by September the 19th. Those nominations can either be made on our Facebook page, which we have over 1,000 followers now, and it is the place where all the cool kids hang out, or you can go by the DPW office and fill out a form, or come here to the city and fill out a form as well. One other announcement is that we would like for you to save the date, September 28. The title of the presentation is Putting Your Garden to Bed, and Jan Coppola Bills from Two Women and a Hoe will be telling us, I know, isn't it an awesome name? Will tell us how to put our gardens to bed for winter.
I'm not saying anything.
She's also going to be doing a book signing, because the little photo that you see down there in the center is the cover of her book that she wrote, and is actually an awesome little read.
Awesome.
Thanks so much, we appreciate your support this month.
Robin, thank you as always. Great job. So, Jenny, before we get to your presentation, I want to just ask council's indulgence, because I know yours is going to be a little longer, and I see a special guest here who doesn't know how we operate yet officially, because she's new to town, so she wouldn't know. But our new superintendent of public schools is here, and anytime that you would like to be on the agenda and come and speak to us, we'd love to have you, and you just let Marnie know in advance that you're coming, and she'll make sure you're on the agenda. But I'm guessing you didn't know that, and I know you thought about coming last, last time, too. So, Dr. Danya Bazey, am I pronouncing that right? Why don't you come up and just introduce yourself if you, if you'd like? We're thrilled to have you.
I'm sorry, we, we try to follow rules in public school, but we're not, we're not very good at it. I was always the student who had to raise my hand a couple of times to get things right. But my name is Danya Bazey. I always tell people, Tanya, Danya, Jazzy Bazey, and that usually, that usually will work it out.
I'll never forget.
But I want to thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt the meeting for this, but I appreciate it very much. I just want to make sure that everyone knows who I am and that I have an open-door policy. Ferndale is a great community, I've been here for about a month, and I'm very excited to be a part of this community that has so much to offer, its students and community members. So, know that anytime you want to come in and talk, I have an open-door policy, I'm fully accessible. I also, we also have a meet-and-greet with me on Wednesday at the school at 6:30 to 7:30. We'll have some snacks and, and light refreshments to bribe you to come in and have a chat with me and get to know me a little bit better. But again, I just want to, you know, thank everybody, I'm very humbled to have this position, and anything that I can do to assist the city to continue to move Ferndale forward as a community and as a public school system, I will be committed to that for a very long time.
Anyone have any comments or questions?
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
No questions. Councilwoman, you were on the selection committee, so...
Well, no, I wasn't on the selection committee, I'm no longer, no longer school board.
No, but I thought you were part of that.
But I was at the, the interview process, and I thought you interviewed, you interviewed very, I was very impressed, so, and I was very impressed that we got all the candidates that we did, so I'm glad you're here. And I look forward to working, well, working with you. I have three that are in the school district right now, so, let's see, I'm a motherfucker, so let me, let me count this right. Okay, I've got, I have a fifth grader now, I have a ninth grader now, and I have a seventh grader now, and there is one who went all the way through the district, kind of before your time, but I look forward to them, the meeting you on Wednesday, and again, your journey here. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks for coming today.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, now Jenny, the next presentation is the 2016 My Life Health and Wellness Center Report. Excited about that.
Oh, this is color.
And yes, we got, we did get copies of that, did we not? Yeah, council should have got a, a copy at the beginning of the meeting, if you take a look at your materials.
Our expert Dan's not here.
I know. He'll be short of that.
We'll meet with him one on one.
I don't know what questions to ask.
Oh, you guys need the clicker? Huh?
Oh, yeah, I know. Just another store, I guess it is.
Thank you.
Is it here, or the lights flickering?
I think they were. This one is a little...
Yeah.
It's subliminal messaging for council. I'm kidding.
Of course. Better seen at home.
We all learned how to use the podium today before the meeting, so Jenny's testing it out.
Is that right? Can we issue grades?
Yeah.
Not an A yet. Oh.
Do you need to get help?
It's not showing up as a PowerPoint.
I knew it was too little control.
Okay, I...
Is it not showing up? Do you need to...
It's not showing up as a PowerPoint.
Can I somehow get into my email or something? Yeah, if you go, just give her a second here. If you go into, I think I see Cohay's feet. There he is. Help.
My thing didn't come over as a PowerPoint.
We do, I, I saw it, I was like...
What do they say in our life? Just talk amongst yourselves.
I know.
We'll be right with you.
In my email? Yes. Sorry, we had a training, you might have more. I want one.
I don't worry.
I'm with you, I'm ready to shake either. Speak if you need to.
Can I, April, can you maybe, maybe leave me a second, I'll go save it differently.
Oh, you need to...
I need to go save it differently.
Okay. Yeah, we can go to, you mind going to consent agenda and let her come back?
I do not mind. Why don't we do that?
Perfect, and keep us moving along.
And skip call to audience?
Or call to audience first.
Why don't we do call to audience first? Because that is next on the agenda, so...
That'll work.
Call to audience is your opportunity to address council on any item that's not on the agenda, because you can talk to that item when we get there, but come on up, give us your name, your address, and three minutes is yours. Good evening.
Hello. I haven't met everybody yet, I'm Jenny Marr, the new director at the Ferndale Library next door, so nice to meet you, so...
Oh, yeah, very nice to meet you.
I have two quick things, one is an invitation, the Friends of the Library is holding a public reception on Saturday for me, from 12 to 2. There will be cake, so, and punch, so if you have a moment to drop in and say hi, feel free. The other thing I brought you, we are distributing the Solar Eclipse glasses at the library, we have them at all of our service desks, they're free for the public, so I brought you a bag over of these, so you can kind of go through and take some home.
We love gifts, thank you.
We need the Solar Eclipse.
It's August 21st. My understanding is the maximum viewing is at 2:27 in the afternoon. We will be having some activities in our courtyard from 1:00 to 4:00, there's going to be ice cream and henna tattoos and games, and so if you want to mosey over from the city hall, it'd be a great place to come to and watch it with everybody. We also have, I wanted to mention, our summer concert series is continuing on August 8, the Detroit Party Marching Band is coming at 6:30, they'll be out in the courtyard, so it should be a really fun time.
Yeah.
So, I wanted to let you know, we have all sorts of events still for summer reading, you can see them on our website, and if you can't make any of them, we have fantastic pictures on our Facebook and Instagram, the pictures, we had an exotic zoo come and bring some animals, and those are really fun, so, but I just wanted to say hi and bring you over some glasses, so...
I love that, thank you. And I hope you heard what I told the superintendent, which is, you're invited to come and address us anytime and share information, and if you let Marnie know, we'll make sure you're on the agenda as well. Thanks.
And I also just want to point out that I heard that the goat, the goat festival went beautifully. My daughter and her friend biked over, so they had a great time, and I heard it was really good.
Yeah, we had some pretty interesting programs all summer, you know, it's nice, I hope people start to see the library does, all sorts of things. Should have had a good time.
Goat event.
It was, yes, it was...
How did I miss that?
I don't know, I don't know, but there were goats in the courtyard.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening? Oh, here comes our glasses.
Are we going to conduct, I'm going to Solar Eclipse you.
I'm not...
I can't see a thing.
Yeah, really.
Right, they're very dark.
Looks out what with these bright lights. I know.
Whoa, yeah, okay. No one else who would like to address council this evening? All right, then we will move on now to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is items that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless council removes something from the consent agenda. So, let me read that now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held July 10, 2017. Item B is the approval to utilize Stevens, Kira Novick, and Tucker, PC, for Ferndale's fiscal year and 2017 audit for an amount not to exceed $32,000 to be taken by the account listed. Item C is the approval of a request to backfill the HR Director position, as submitted by the city manager. Item D is the approval of contract documents to approve the Garland Company proposal for replacing the Water Department Pump Station roof at a cost of $86,539, contingent upon the city attorney's approval and charged to the Water Department Capital Outlay Account. Item E is the approval of the proposal from Siemens for the replacement of the Coolic Center Boiler Control Panel at a cost of $7,489 to be charged to the Facility Maintenance Account. And then finally, item F is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by our city manager's office, subject to... city manager's office, subject to review by the council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Leaks May and supported by Polica. Now, any discussion? I must admit, April, when I saw that there was something about the Kulik Center boiler on here, I was really afraid until I saw the price.
This is our hail Mary. This is our hail Mary.
And so maybe, yeah, so just, I know that we are nearing the end of the useful life, not nearing, we have passed the end of the useful life of that boiler. So tell me, just sort of briefly, what we're hoping will happen with this purchase and...
At this point, we really don't know what the future will be for the community center. And so I know the city manager's in discussions with the school district to try to see what their future plans might be. There is a significant amount of investment that needs to be made in the building as a whole, and so this is just enough to get the boiler operational and to prepare for the heating season that's coming up. And, you know, in the future, depending upon what the use of the building will be or what the future may be, it will take a considerable amount of money, perhaps as much as $200,000 to replace the boiler and also some of the independent units that are in each room. That does not count for the cost of the roof and other problems and structural deficiencies that have occurred with the building over time.
Thank you. And I bring that up, and I think council's aware, just to make the community aware, that we have some decisions to make about the Kulik Center. We don't pay, the school district's kind enough to give us that building for a dollar a year lease, but we're responsible for the facilities and the maintenance, and there are some significant issues on the horizon, so we'll need to be, not that you're not aware of them already, but we'll need to be addressing those.
Right, I just wanted to sort of build on that and draw the conclusion that that came out through the strategic planning process, and so this is a priority for council and staff to figure out over the next fiscal year, which is 2017-18.
Yep.
We'll have some kind of decision maybe before the end of the fiscal year on what the next steps are.
All right. Other comments, questions on the consent agenda? Marney, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers, Polica?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you, the consent agenda is adopted. Now we're going to move back to presentation, item C, because it looks like, Jenny, that you're all teed up, right?
I am, I am sorry. Technical difficulty. Thank you this evening, mayor and council, for giving me the opportunity to come and share with you our successes from our second year of service here at our My Life Health and Wellness Center. I have with me here tonight Mark Mankwin, who you know is our agent of record through Cornerstone Municipal. They're our broker for insurance services and also our, lend a great hand in helping us navigate the healthcare center. So as you know, last year when we made this presentation, we had expected better utilization than what we saw in the first year of the health center. We're really proud to say that we, this year, or in 2016, increased our utilization 116%. We really attribute most of that to the ability and the graciousness of council in awarding us the ability to offer incentives to get employees into the center for their HRA, which really brought a lot of furthered utilization down through the year. So really great utilization. We're sitting at about 65% for the year. The center's total or prime utilization rate to be maximum, to reach maximum efficiency would be about 85, so we're still working on that in collaboration with Madison Heights and Royal Oak as well to increase that number overall within the collaborative. I won't go too much into the details in terms of finances unless that's something council is interested in diving into, but in a nutshell, it's safe to say that we did experience some financial savings in year two, based upon what was budgeted. And really, I want to draw some attention to the savings as it related to the marketplace comparison. We were able this year to demonstrate that we are seeing a savings with both labs, meds, and our office visit amounts from what we would be paying in the marketplace for those visits that are being utilized at the center. So we also did a little chart to kind of demonstrate, the city isn't just saving money, our employees are too. So as you know, when our employees utilize the center for services, they do not pay to use the center. There is no office visit, there is no copay for lab fees or medications that are dispensed at the center. Last year, we assumed a total between all of the employees who use the center of over $14,000 in copays they otherwise would have spent had they gone to a regular provider through their healthcare system. So that averages about $120 per employee that our employees are saving. Some of our key results, and I wanted to make sure I put this in here because it definitely hit on some of the goals that we had talked about last year. Our average appointments per month increased from 14 to 30.25 from 15, and we increased our HRA utilization from 11 to 91, which is pretty incredible. 91 of our employees and their family members obtained the health risk assessment, which as you know is a lab that's drawn that can identify any potential chronic or prechronic conditions that employees may be having, that can be treated through the center and in wellness initiative to hopefully prevent claims relating to those issues from hitting our insurance plan. We identified 95 new instances of either chronic or prechronic conditions within our population just in 2016, which if you add up on a, the term cost avoidance kind of gets bounced around a little bit, but had those issues actually turned into claims, could have been pretty hefty to the city's healthcare plan. We dispensed 107 medications last year, and we had 98 wellness coaching contacts in 2016 versus 12 in 2015. So we are certainly making an impact when it comes to wellness in our population.
How often is an employee eligible for an HRA?
Once per year.
Once a year?
Yeah. It's not just the employee, it would be anyone in the employee's family as well, over the age of 18, 18 or over. We kind of talked a little bit about our financial results. We can breeze through this unless anyone has any additional questions about that. Wellness initiatives and goals. Again, we had targeted some short-term goals. We did achieve those goals this year. Our goal was to administer 50 HRAs, and we administered 91. Long-term was to impact personal health in a positive way and to reduce chronic conditions. We had 91 HRAs that we administered, 98 wellness contacts, a really incredible piece of data that we obtained through our results was that 18% of the folks who had an HRA in 2015 reduced their risk factors from 2015 to 2016. So they're getting better. And so the long-term overall goal would be to see that number grow, that percentage grow, and see those risk factors decrease. Future wellness goals, obviously is to administer, continue to administer health risk assessments and hopefully administer a few more this year. We'll be doing that again in October, November. Our monthly center goal, we'd like to increase that to 35 visits per month on average, and we really want to try to increase more family participation at the center aside from staff. Incorporating some additional wellness programs, we've talked a little bit about our summer fitness challenge that we have going on. That's been incredibly successful. We're in week three, and we've increased just from last week to this week our steps by over 40,000. So we've got five people last week who walked over 10,000 steps every day within the week, so that's pretty incredible. Some additional programs that we'd like to incorporate, smoking cessation, nutrition, some other interdepartmental contests and things of that nature that we think will help increase wellness and visits to the center. One of the things I wanted to just highlight for council to kind of demonstrate, why are we doing this versus just kind of what we've always done? And I think that this data really outlines that very well. One of the things that the center can be used for is your traditional, like, sick visit to the doctor. So I've got sinus, sinus pressure, I've got a congested, I've got congestion, it's not going away, I have a fever, so on and so forth. And certainly, we can see those folks, and the center can dispense antibiotics if necessary. What we're trying to do is move towards really impacting those chronic conditions. That's where you see the biggest bang for your buck, if you will, in terms of health and wellness management. And so in 2015, the top, of the top five diagnoses that you see up there, two of the top five, the top two, actually are acute in nature and would involve sort of that cold or sinus infection, allergies, things of that nature. In 2016, all five, all five diagnoses are related to chronic conditions, which actually relate back to our wellness strategies and the HRA and managing things such as hypertension, cholesterol, diabetes, weight management, things of that nature. So what that data tells us is we're making that impact and that some of these things that more traditionally you would see in a doctor's office were actually impacting even deeper within the center, that they would not otherwise have received those services or didn't know that they had the conditions. And the medications dispensed just kind of copy the slide from previous, so you can see the medications that are being dispensed obviously address the issues there. The slide just kind of talks a little bit more about that. One thing that I want to make sure that we kind of target is the conversation about productivity and morale. It's really hard to quantify that, but we can tell you by working at this city and anyone who is in the audience that might want to chime in, our center is near and dear to us, and employees who use it really value it. I hear all the time, "I'm so thankful I was able to just get in that day and get my medication and get back to work." So we believe from a morale and a productivity perspective, that it has been very, very valuable to our team in getting employees better, keeping the morale up, and increasing productivity when maybe they weren't feeling as well or so on, but felt that they had a place to go to manage that in a low-cost, kind of easy manner.
Is there a way to quantify that in terms of sick days or...
In the Care Here annual report, they do, they attempt to kind of do their best at quantifying that in a financial way. It would be on page two. At the top of that, it says office visit savings, medication savings. Line five is productivity.
Oh, okay.
And they base that on, they average three hours of lost time for work per office visit that someone would need to attend to, which is probably pretty conservative if you figure by the time they drive there, they sit in the waiting room, they drive to get their prescription, maybe come back to work, because maybe half the day is over by then. And so they basically took that in conjunction with our average rate of pay to determine a productivity savings estimate of about $16,000. So that's how the vendor kind of translates that. It's not an exact science, but... And the last part that I just wanted to touch on was our patient satisfaction surveys. We're going to do some more internal surveying of our staff to kind of get a better idea of what, what folks are using it for, if they're not using it, why are they not using it, and kind of better navigate that. But essentially, a couple of key things came out of this that Care Here administered, and that's that 100% of respondents would recommend this to their family, and 80% of them indicated that the health center is the first place that they go to when they have a health concern or are looking at some type of a wellness issue. So I thought that was pretty incredible as opposed to 2015.
Excellent.
And that's all I have. I want to turn it over to Mark, because we do have some new and exciting things coming down the pike for our health center, and I thought it'd be a great time to share that with council.
Thanks, Jenny. Thanks, council, I appreciate you allowing us to talk about Care Here tonight. There is some exciting news. I want to kind of put it in context, though, as to, you know, some of the primary goals of the center for not only the city of Ferndale, but for the collaboration of My Life itself. The general idea behind Care Here is to engage employees and their family members, and the more we can engage them, get them easy access to quality and cost-efficient care is a good thing, not only for the city, but also for the employees and their families. One of the ways to increase access to care is to expand the collaborative. So right now, the collaboration is between three cities, Ferndale, Royal Oak, and Madison Heights. And the goal behind the Care Here model is to increase that collaboration. So we've been working about a year and a half and finally succeeded in getting two additional cities to join in on the collaboration. That's the city of Hazel Park and the city of Oak Park. They both signed their contracts with Care Here, and right now, we're kind of working through a timeline. And to be able to handle the additional load, employee load and independent load, the second part of the announcement is we're adding the Fern Care Facility, and Ann Heller is here tonight. Why don't you stand up, Ann? Ann has been gracious enough to come to the city over two years ago and found out about the My Life and the Care Here concept and said, "You know what? We have so much extra capacity here in the center, why don't, why don't we collaborate together?" So not only does that help Fern Care, because now they have a new tenant, soon to be, and that new tenant will be paying rent, and that's going to be Oak Park and Hazel Park. They're going to be bearing the rent for that center. And, but Ferndale employees will be able to participate in the center, so now, not only do you have the center in Madison Heights, but more conveniently, you now will have a center very close by. That center is going to open up initially two days a week, so now we're going to have all five days a week covered with open hours. Those two additional days will amount to 24 additional office visit slots that will be available to all the employees and family members of the collaborative. And we think that's going to increase that utilization number. Between the two cities being added in, we're at 65% here at Ferndale. We're hoping to get the entire collaboration up to 80% by the end of, by the middle of next year, once that center is open. So all in all, you know, increasing access is by making hours more available, and now we're going to have that at a very convenient location. Care Here is going to put their touches on the Fern Care Center, and we're really excited about getting that started.
That's awesome.
All right. So thank you for your patience, and then, and the time that it's taken to do this has been, I think, well worthwhile, the way to grow this thing.
Great. Now, Mark, a few things, too. It's, this is becoming, we were kind of on the ground floor on this, but it's becoming more, something more and more communities and private industry are doing as well, so what I also hear is there's going to be opportunities for us to have reciprocal, is that one word?
Yes, reciprocity agreements.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, and I'm glad you brought that up, April, because I, you know, as a firm, Cornerstone Municipal, we're a healthcare agent and consultant, but we're very much dedicated to the municipal marketplace and the public sector. We have over 50 municipal clients throughout the state. I would say most of them are in the southeast Michigan area. And our idea behind this is to, again, increase access to, for care for all the cities in this area. And so we have a couple of other collaboratives that we're working on right now in which we could have reciprocal agreements. In fact, Kate Baldwin from the city of Sterling Heights, which is one of our long-term clients, they're going to be, they have plans already in opening up their own center in Sterling Heights. I don't know how many of the Ferndale employees live out in that area, but the goal is not only to add a Sterling Heights, but maybe eventually a Southfield, Berkeley, the city of Dearborn is looking at one of these centers. So I would hope in five years, we have several centers set up with reciprocity agreements so that no matter where your employees live, they will have access to a My Life center. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? No, that's exciting, yes.
I would just add one thing, too, really quick. From a math perspective or a finance perspective, if there are any concerns regarding adding an additional location, different, an additional hours, we've done the math, and what it appears is if they're adding those two additional cities with the additional employees and the revenue coming in from that, actually will save on an administrative fee basis because you'd be splitting that amongst five cities versus just three. So we're excited to really kind of see that come to fruition. So thank you for allowing us to continue to administer the model.
Very good. Well, thank you. Thanks, Jenny. Appreciate it. Thanks, Mark. All right, we'll move on now then to the regular agenda. Item A is the consideration of the West Nine Mile Road TAP grant with Oak Park. Justin, you're going to introduce that?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So it's always exciting to hear...
And our idea behind this is to, again, increase access for care for all the cities in this area. And so we have a couple of other collaboratives that we're working on right now in which we could have reciprocal agreements. In fact, Kate Baldwin from the city of Sterling Heights, which is one of our long-term clients, they're going to be, they have plans already in opening up their own center in Sterling Heights. I don't know how many of the Ferndale employees live out in that area, but the goal is not only to add a Sterling Heights, but maybe eventually a Southfield, Berkeley. The city of Dearborn is looking at one of these centers. So I would hope in five years, we have several centers set up with reciprocity agreements so that no matter where your employees live, they will have access to a MyLife center. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? No, that's exciting.
I would just add one thing too, really quick. From a math perspective or a finance perspective, if there are any concerns regarding adding an additional location, different, an additional hours, we've done the math, and what it appears is if adding those two additional cities with the additional employees and the revenue coming in from that actually will save on an administrative fee basis because you'd be splitting that amongst five cities versus just three. So we're excited to really kind of see that come to fruition. So thank you for allowing us to continue to administer the model.
Very good. Well, thank you. Thanks, Jenny. Appreciate it. Thanks, Mark. All right, we'll move on now then to the regular agenda. Item A is the consideration of the West Nine Mile Road TAP Grant with Oak Park. Justin, you're going to introduce that?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So it's always exciting to hear that we won a grant, even though I'd say our success rate with TAP grants has been pretty, pretty good. Most of our projects with bike lanes or the neighborhood bike route from a few years ago are from TAP grants. So we're pretty fortunate that SEMCOG and MDOT have really, you know, paid attention to our applications and appreciated what we're doing here. So just to refresh everybody, last, in May of 2016, we brought forth just a resolution for council to consider and pass a resolution of support for a grant application, as I said, last May. So typically, we've been the lead on most of these applications, so it was really cool to see another community right on our, one of our neighboring communities be the lead on this application. So Oak Park led the application process, and they're pretty fortunate that they have a decent amount of right-of-way where they're actually doing a portion of their project will actually be an off-street walking and biking trail. And they're mixing in some parks and some benches, seating areas, and things like that. So we feel like that's a great complement to what we're doing, and Oak Park was part of the grant process for the neighborhood bike route too. So I think that gave them a good sense of what the process was like, and so they're leading the way on this. So this, the proposed plan essentially is for Ferndale's portion from Pinecrest to Republic, so about a half mile or so, to add in the Ferndale portion, paint improvements. So if you think of Livernoy, what we did a few years ago, also through the TAP program, you know, we're kind of in between, not going to be repaving there anytime soon. So this would be pretty much mostly just a paint project other than some updated crossings and signage. So the estimated cost for the city's major road fund would be about $128,000. That includes, with these TAP applications, we always try and do at least a 30% match. So both Oak Park and Ferndale are doing a 30% match. And so in total, all right, excuse me, the overall enhancements essentially would provide a safer route on West Nine Mile Road for Ferndale residents, Oak Park, anyone who's using that in between. So essentially, from, I believe, Coolidge to the Hazel Park border, there will be mostly bike lanes or off-street bike lanes present, which is pretty exciting considering where we started years ago. So this project aligns with the Ferndale Moves Non-Motorized Plan from a few years ago, also aligns with the new strategic plan in the accessible transportation options in strong regional partnerships categories, also in the overall city master plan as well. So happy to answer any questions you might have on the project.
What questions, Ms. Counselor?
No questions, just really a comment that I'm excited to see us working with other cities. It's all about working together and not really one-upping one another because our residents could benefit as well as Oak Parks. They come here, we go there. So I'm very excited, and bravo to you for your, and your group for your work that you've put into this.
Thank you.
And keep the grants coming, right? Thanks.
Through the chair, I, you know, you keep the grants coming by being innovative and continuing to partner and build connections where you can. And so building off of what Councilwoman Leaks May has said, I think going after these is a continuation of what great job you guys are doing, but also signaling to the other cities that we're a partner and trying to figure out how to better connect and improve the safety of our streets for residents, bicyclists, motorists, and people who are walking. So I think, can you sort of go over the timeline of this project?
Sure. So we were just awarded this spring approvals between Oak Park City Council and this council are supposed to wrap up before Labor Day, and then construction would actually start next May. Our portion is not quite as long, so it probably just depends on, it'll all be bid as one project. So I think typically these try and wrap up by October. So probably May to October for the full project. I can definitely come back and provide counsel with an update on our portion and the project in total.
Okay. And I noticed there's some really nice pictures of about a trailhead connector, a bike racks, and a covered bike repair shelter. Are those examples, or are those actually going to be similar in what is being built?
Those are examples, but I think, and that portion is actually on the Oak Park side. In their, I think that's near the Coolidge end, and that will be part of their off-street portion. Our portion includes some of the green paint you've seen around town, the bike lanes, as I mentioned, that would be buffered similar to Livernoy, and some pedestrian crossings similar to what we have in front of City Hall by the court, and some of the crossing lights, the rectangular rapid flashing beacons that are part of those crossings as well.
And can you explain, these aren't protected bike lanes, they're buffered. So can you explain the difference?
Yes. So buffered is essentially what is on Livernoy, so it has about a five-foot bike lane with a two-to-three-foot painted strip along there. We are actually going to do some separated bike lanes on this stretch. So separated means it can be either concrete, or it can be flexible delineators, those plastic posts that have the reflector on them. So we've been starting to do those where we can. Those will be on portions of Pinecrest and portions of this project. We're sort of limited in some ways, in certain areas, especially on West Nine Mile where there is on-street parking, or those parking bays, I should say. So we'll essentially try to do the delineators so there's some separation near most of the intersections. But, so, West Nine Mile could potentially be repaved in 2022, I believe is when it's slated for. And so, you know, just like Livernoy and some of these other areas, this could be, you know, an interim design, and then once we actually do repave the road and look at curb and things like that, that's where we can probably explore something more.
And I guess this is probably further ahead, but since this is a sort of a joint project between another city that where it's flipped, they're more comprehensive than we are in terms of the intensity of change on their street, is there any talk about joint education, about what's going to happen to that street?
Yes.
Communications?
Yeah, and that's a great point. We've been talking about for next year's Bike Month, doing some joint events in May and, you know, before construction starts, and then probably after as well. And Oak Park's been very open too. We've been talking about, you know, potentially doing a cost share on some measurement devices to count, actually count bicyclists in the bike lanes, and they've been a great partner overall. They actually, two years ago, before they even applied for the bike route grant, they invited staff to come give input on this project, and so they've been great partners from the start.
Just briefly, so am I reading this correctly, that our portion of the cost is $127,717? Is that?
Correct.
Right, okay. And has Oak Park approved this agreement, or do they need to? I mean, we're doing it with them, but have they, do you know?
They did their initial resolution last year to even apply, and then...
Like we did.
Yes, and then the, I think it's the first meeting in August is where they'll sign this same agreement that's in your packet.
Okay. Could you just verify that for me and let me know?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Not a question, but I have a comment. On one of the renderings, not renderings, but the drawings of where the islands will be, I noticed there's going to be a walk across island at Highland, and it reminds me of the one that was located on Hilton that everyone loved to drive over. So it looks very, very close to the intersection, so I'm wondering if we may want to reconsider the location of that one. I think you may end up, the design of it, or, yeah, shortening up and putting the walkway, you know, a little further east. You're coming up to it. Oh!
Yep. Yeah, we can absolutely take a look at that. I believe that the engineers, when they did, I should scroll down here, when they did design it, they did use the turn templates and things like that. But we, for all, for all the ones that we've done since that particular island, we've shortened things up, so I'll clarify and be sure that that's the case for this one as well.
Yeah, I just don't want a repeat of Hilton.
Sure.
All right, a motion would be in order. Yep, there's the language.
I move, oh, this is really worded. I move in the matter of West Nine Mile Road Transportation Alternative Grant, TAP Grant, that City Council approved the cost-sharing agreement to be administered by the city of Oak Park with the following findings as presented in the packet.
Support. Moved by Polika and supported by Piana. Any further discussion or questions? All right, Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers, Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
Ann Mirko.
Yes, thank you. That was adopted. Thank you, Justin. The next item of business is a discussion, no vote required this evening, but a discussion on our inclusive housing policy. And are you introducing that as well?
Yes. So based on council's request, earlier this year, we have, I mean, obviously, there's been a lot of housing development going on throughout the city, even more since we've had that discussion. And we, at one point, brought in a housing consultant to kind of talk about the idea of inclusive housing. So if you're familiar, or maybe not familiar, but the idea behind inclusive housing is that a typical household shouldn't spend more than 30% of its income, whether it's rent or mortgage, on housing, because that limits other needs, such as food and transportation, things like that. So that's just a general guideline. So we've been talking a lot about the number of housing units proposed throughout the city, whether it be apartments and single-family homes and everything else surrounding that. And, you know, what does affordable mean? What does it mean to be an inclusive community that has a diverse range of incomes? And we've, ever since talking with that consultant a few months ago, she kind of gave us, you know, parameters of what Washtenaw County is doing, what are some other communities doing. So then we went back and kind of looked, you know, compared to some of the communities closer around us, and, you know, there's not a ton of guidance, I would say, on inclusive housing from the state of Michigan, just because inclusive, inclusionary zoning is effectively illegal in the state. Where cities do have some ability to affect that is on, with properties, the city-owned properties that they sell, and then properties that request incentives. So we've focused on, you know, providing a recommendation on a potential policy. So as you said, tonight is just a discussion, but, you know, based on this recommendation and council's feedback, we'd come back at a later date with not only a hopefully consent agenda approval, but also a phase two of this project, because it is certainly multifaceted and has many, many layers, and will probably change even in a couple of months. But, so, staff looked at what Detroit was doing, what some other communities around us were doing, and so we came up with, for any new housing development that includes city-owned land or requests incentives, so those being Oprah incentives or Brownfield incentives, we would require that those housing developments, that 25% of those units be set aside for inclusive housing. And those projects would be of 25 units or larger. So someone building, you know, two homes wouldn't really make a lot of sense in that respect. So I can get a little further into how that's made up. The, when I mentioned the, and there's a lot of percentages here, so feel free to ask questions, but 30% of the income, we, this general standard in this realm, I guess, is that an area median income, so AMI, for the regions, which is, which is based inclusive of Detroit, Warren, Dearborn, all the communities around us. So there's a standard AMI that we use as a baseline. So currently, for our statistical area, that is about $54,000, being the AMI. So we're recommending that 25% that I mentioned would include 10% of those units at the 80% AMI number, 10% at 60%, and 5% at 50%. So very confusing, I'm sure, but essentially, that would cap rents between $670 and about $1,100 at those ranges. So for example, a project that would have about 120 units that would try and meet this requirement would, that would be about 90 market-rate apartments or units, and then 30, what we're calling inclusive units. So that, those 30 units would be divided into those categories I mentioned. So just to give some examples of households that earn that income, you know, we're thinking about being inclusive and trying to keep, you know, some employees that work downtown. So we're thinking of, you know, teachers that might work in the Ferndale Schools community, in the Ferndale Community Schools, administrative assistants, medical technicians, those on average an annual income is about $43,000. Other households that would fall into the $27,000 to $33,000 range, so they would fall into this 50% to 60% AMI that we've been talking about, those include, you know, people that are employed in waitstaff or salon workers, cooks. So these are a lot of people that, you know, work all throughout Ferndale, or maybe work outside of the community and live in Ferndale, but are, you know, struggling to meet some of the income demands for some of these new market-rate housing projects that are being proposed. We also spoke with the Ferndale Housing Commission about this policy and get their feedback and actually get a better understanding of, you know, their population as well, the residents that stay there. They have about 160, 170 units in the city. Most of their units are at a lower threshold than what we're recommending for this policy. You know, that's something that I think, you know, we'd want to explore, especially, you know, talking more with the Housing Commission about what their future may hold as well. And so that could shift our policy in the future, but we feel like this is a good starting point for average median income ranges. So this was essentially phase one. What we'd like to do is kind of get your thoughts on this phase one tonight, potentially come back with a phase two where we've seen with other communities, there's further statistical analysis that could be done and actually give us a goal number of, you know, sure we want inclusive housing, but what is that goal number based on the developments that are happening and the changeover of, you know, some of the units in the city already? So that's something we'd come back with and get a recommendation for that as well. We're also looking at, we're updating some of our downtown guidelines, design guidelines, and so this would kind of be folded into that practice as well. There's a lot of studies that show that more inclusive housing developments that are in the downtown usually are more successful because they are closer to transit, they may not have a car, so this would kind of help that population as well. So I know that's a lot of numbers to throw at you all at once, so just want to put those out there, and I'm happy to answer any questions about this policy and then the next phase as well.
All right. Questions or comments to the council?
Well, comments, I like the direction this is going.
Yes.
I really do. Question, though, is the AMI, how often is that calculated? Is there a set time period where it's recalculated every year, every two years?
I believe it's every year, because I think that the number that I came from was 2015 This is the same number that Detroit included in their recommendation as well for what they're doing.
Okay. And you said you looked at Detroit and some other communities, but I know there's not a lot of other communities. What other, what other communities?
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's not a ton. Traverse City is one that's really grappling with this issue right now, because their issue is a little bit different and it's such a tourism-driven economy, so they're running out of places for their summer workers to go, or to stay and actually, you know, service the industry throughout the warm months. But mostly Detroit and Traverse City, and then... But mostly Detroit and Traverse City and then Washtenaw County, and that's a little different because it's county-wide.
Right.
Um, so, and that, that was who the consultant was that kind of gave us a really good, I think, education, um, earlier this year on it, on the subject.
Because I'm curious, I think, if I'm not mistaken, that the Detroit policy is 80% inclusive at 80% AMI?
Um...
Is that correct? I could be wrong.
So, and I, I just double-checked before I came. So they, they're a little bit, um, I think our policy's a little bit, a little bit further. So there, so ours is 25%, theirs is 20% of, of the, the units, overall units.
Right.
And then, so our AMI is 10 at 80, 10 at 60, 5 at 50, whereas theirs is 10 at 80, 5 at 60, 5 at 50.
Oh, so it's not ju- I, okay.
Yeah.
I was under the impression that all 20% was, uh, at 80. That's not the case.
Right, yeah, they kind of split it up as well.
Okay.
Um, so we, we chose 25% over 20, instead of 20% of, of the units, um, just in thinking that, you know, we're a smaller community, you know, that's probably going to be, um, Detroit has many more square miles to spread out, um, these efforts over, um, and where we're more concentrated, downtown's a little bit smaller, so, um, you know, it, it seemed, seemed that we could be a little bit, a little bit more aggressive. Um, but then again, there, also the other difference, I guess, is that ours would start with projects that are at, um, 25 units or more, whereas theirs is 20 units or more.
Okay.
So, um, little differences there, but...
But just to be clear, we're not just talking about the Central Business District, right? Or are we?
We're, we're not just talking about the Central Business District. Um, that, that is one strategy that could be done, certainly.
Right.
Um, I think probably you'll see most of the projects that would come forward would probably be in the Central Business District anyway, um, that this would affect, but...
Through the chair, if I, if I may, are there any, um, additional housing developments going through planning right now?
There are a few proposed, yes. Um, none that, I don't think that would fall under this policy. Um, so I'd say there's probably...
Based on the size?
Ba- based on the size and then just based on asking for incentives, or at least they have not came, came forward yet.
Right. But they could.
But they could, certainly, yeah.
Through the chair, if I may, can I add some context to this? Um, because some people might be watching or learning for the first time why we're doing this, and, and for me, um, this policy was a, a direct response from concerns that I'm hearing from residents about, um, rents are going up in Ferndale, and so it's getting harder to find, uh, price points, um, for the single person or a single parent with a small child, uh, where they're having a hard time finding a place to, uh, rent in Ferndale. And so, um, you know, we're trying to solve multiple challenges, in my point of view and my opinion, and that is, um, making sure that we have housing choices with new, new construction. This really is targeted at new construction. Um, and that, uh, that new construction that is built closer to transit stops, if you look at what happens in Chicago and some other areas, while we don't have, you know, a mass transit system in place, but, uh, real estate values go up, therefore rents go up, uh, for housing units that are located near transit options. And so the highest real estate and most expensive are the ones in Chicago near, uh, an L-line or, or something like that. And so looking down the road, the future, this is about setting us up, so five, 10 years from now, if in the event that there is transit built, uh, that we would have housing already in place and that we're not as reactive, um, 10 years from now, and digging ourselves out of a hole, a deeper hole than what we would be in now. Um, and also, this is important for me because we do have a housing crisis or a, a affordable unit, or affordable housing crisis right now. So, uh, pay isn't going up, but real, uh, rents are. So people aren't able to adjust and afford that as well. That's not necessarily a Ferndale problem for us to solve as a city on our own, um, but that's a national trend in which this policy is trying to, um, address to some degree. Um, and so I, I think, uh, resp- you know, responding to concerns, planning ahead, um, and working with developers who are investing in our community, they certainly have the ability to set aside these things. Developers do it all the time, all over the United States. We're not asking, this policy isn't asking any, uh, seasoned developer to do anything different that they might do in another state and another major region. Uh, and so for me, this is working with, in the parameters that we're setting in place here, um, or considering. And I think the other place is, is that, you know, we still have missing middle housing, and what is that? That is from a single-family home to these big apartment complexes, um, you know, the, the smaller four-units, six-unit places where I think could serve as infill development. I think we're taking a look at that as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and this all sort of fits into place. Um, but I think where we really need to take a look at is part of the, you know, the engaging the housing expert is, um, this parking waiver and height bonus. So I think we need to have a, a really good conversation about what does parking do to the cost of a unit? And when you add more parking, the cost of a unit goes up to accommodate that small spot of real estate to house a car. And that is the difference between, can be the difference between making a unit affordable or non-affordable for the price points that we're talking here. And so I think that's going to be part of our policy discussion about really what does that mean and what are we willing to negotiate in order to make this policy work. So I think that's an important distinction, um, that we need to hear from the expert, whoever we get to, to talk about, what does that do to, um, a development?
All great points, and I, I think it's really important, um, that we, with this expert that we do have for phase two to take a look at, uh, to actually prove exactly what we've all kind, I think, heard, and just that the rents are going up and they can compare, you know, Ferndale compared to other communities and what those rents are. The Washington, Washtenaw County, uh, presentation, which I'm happy to send to anybody who'd like to see it, um, did a really deep dive, um, into that, and it is, is pretty powerful.
What, what do you expect? Now I'm curious about what this person would be studying. What, what do you, what kind of information or, or, uh, policy considerations do you expect that the, uh, the expert, housing expert would help us determine?
Um, a lot of the statistical analysis, so getting to an actual goal. Um, what makes sense for inclusive housing downtown? How many units does that mean? And what is, what is the gap? What, what are we missing right now? Um, as well as comparison to, um, communities that are similar to our size, maybe nationally. Um, and then, um, really diving into, as Councilwoman Piana said, the, um, potential for doing, for doing some of these bonuses to get more of this type of housing where we need it most.
Right.
So we'd be happy to provide a, kind of a, more of a scope before we engage the expert.
Yep.
I would, I would support, I would support that request.
Okay.
Cool. How, um, how do you monitor over 30 years, the, the rents?
That's what, that's what I was wondering when I started this research as well. Um, it's, it's, a lot of it's tied to the certificate of occupancy. Um, and so it, in some, some communities, I think Detroit's, um, they had mentioned that for 30 years, um, a unit does have to stay affordable, um, and at that ti- after 30 years is when that, that, you know...
Right.
... restriction or, or limit comes off. Um, but it's, it's a lot of it's tied to the certificate of occupancy. There's also safeguards you can have if a unit, uh, wants to change over from a rental to a condo, and, and what does that mean? And what are, what are the gaps, uh, or what, what should that cap still be? Um, I think in Detroit's ordinance, um, any rental that's converted to a condo has to be at 80 to 100% of the AMI for, if, if it's converted. So, um, I don't know if that's, I, I still think that allows too much leeway, but...
Yeah, they're going to tell us the ratio we need.
Right.
Right? So this is a, a good start, and this is a, a good baseline, but the housing expert is going to say, you need so, this, so many units to hit that mark.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then you can negotiate with developers as they come in, um, the ones who want incentives from the city, right? For new construction. And so I think this is a, a good, a good guideline to begin.
I agree. I, I think this is needed. Um, uh, once again, we're sort of blazing a trail, because there's not a lot of other communities around here our size that have done it. Um, I will really want to look carefully at the notion of waiving parking requirements in the Central Business District, given the current situation there, but it's, it's possible that in two years, that parking capacity looks very different. It would be hard for us to approve that today, to be honest with you. Um, so, um, but I think this is all, uh, uh, much needed in our community.
Right.
Um, and I am curious, though, and, and I see Heather's here, so maybe she knows the answer to this, but you were te- it felt like you were teasing something, which is that you said, well, the, the Housing Commission and their, how their future may shift could impact this. Are there particular strategic directions, Heather, that you guys are considering that might impact the numbers that we reach? I'm just, or, or did I just miss, did I read something into that comment that, uh, that really wasn't there?
Well, our, our current housing mix includes, um, our two high-rise buildings, one at 500 East 9, and that's got 55 units, and then, of course, we've got our Withington West property that has 6 to 8 units, and then we also have 43 scattered site homes. We've recently com- completed a comprehensive physical needs assessment, and that, um, was alarming to see, um, in black and white, exactly the, the capital needs that we have. Um, and so we've got to make some decisions about how we want to, um, potentially reposition, um, and reinvest in our properties going forward.
Okay.
We definitely would not want to see any loss in capacity with regard to our units, um, but we do need to think critically about what our future looks like.
Okay.
Um, and it, as noted in this memo, you know, I think it's important, and I, I would just highlight that at this point, we largely house, um, those who are elderly and/or disabled, um, within the community, and I think aging in place...
Right.
... is such an important piece of this conversation, because we're talking about, like, you know, making sure that the business folks have their, um, staff, you know, find affordable units and everything else. We also want to make sure that, you know, mom and dad, as they age and their incomes change, that they can stay in place and find, um, access to housing that's near all of the amenities that they, um, are going to utilize, including transportation, library, city hall, everything else. And that's where our properties are, and that's what's really special about, um, public housing in Ferndale, is that, um, that they're really situated in a place that allows people to really be a part of this community. And so, um, I don't know if that answered your question, but it's kind of like a nice coming together of you all talking about this policy and us being in a position to really think strategically about what our future looks like, because it's a great big question, um, and it's an exciting opportunity.
Great, that's very helpful, thank you. Other comment, two questions? Is there more direction you need from us?
No, I think if, you know, if you're comfortable with the, the makeup of the recommendation, um, specifically the, the unit mix, um, I think we would come back with, um, the incentives policy and just this policy, um, for your official approval.
Have we had any, um, feedback, or have we shared it at all with the development community? Uh, um, have we solicited any feedback? And if not, can you tell me what your professional opinion is on, I mean, on, on that reaction?
We haven't specifically shared this with any of the development community, but we have had, I'd say, a few more, um, development teams come to us and ask about, you know, where is a good spot to put some affordable units and, and is there a requirement? There's a lot of, because of the amount that's happening in Detroit, and now I think it's starting to be a little bit more expected, and they know that Ferndale's community that, you know, would be inclusive and looking for this, but...
And I would rather, I, I, I wouldn't be open to them stopping us doing a policy, but I'd be ra- I'd be interested in getting their feedback sooner rather than later, so that if they say, wait a minute, hold, you know, really be better if you, you know what I'm saying? Uh, it, it feels like soliciting that now would be appropriate?
Through the chair, I, maybe possible we could go through the Urban Land Use Inst- yeah, ULI, um, to get, they have a chapter here with all of the developers who might be able to give us some feedback as a, as a expert source. I don't know, it's an idea.
Absolutely. Um, we feel like at this point, now that we have sort of a proposed split and a ratio, that we have some, some more ammo to go in those conversations. Anecdotally, a lot of the conversations we've had with developers are about, you know, size and scale, because the economics of affordable housing from their side is how many units can they get on that same property? And actually, Councilwoman Leaks May kind of alluded to this a little earlier in terms of the proposals that could come, and some of those sites that, you know, might be ideal for that kind of scale. You think of the Hayes-Lemmer's site, you think of Iron Ridge, you think of, uh, other areas along our corridors, that you can do the land assembly that would be required to get those kind of units up, and that's why we're kind of talking about these things like height and density bonuses, and even looking at, um, you know, something that I'm really hoping the expert, uh, can guide us on. I'm actually a member of ULI too, so we'll have to peg him, uh, for this, but, uh, things that you can do to, um, sort of spread that burden around, instead of just kind of putting it on one site. Let's say you can't get the land assembly on one site, you know, we have sort of payment in lieu of parking, uh, perhaps setting up a fund so that you can do vouchers, that you can, you know, get some folks into housing in Ferndale, even if you can't get it on that site.
Okay. Good, thank you. Yeah, and if there's a way to just sort of encapsulate or executive summarize some of those concerns or, or comments or feedback from them, that would be really helpful.
Yeah.
Again, not because I don't want to do a policy, because we need to, uh, but, but there is a balance, right? Because the more inclusive housing you do, the, the more costly the other housing is. So striking the right balances is also going to be important.
Yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on this item? It's just a discussion item, so no motion required.
No, just a little bit on that. We might have some topics that don't warrant a, a total work session, that I've worked with the mayor on, that this was a great opportunity to just kind of touch base, make sure we were on that right track, but not have to create a whole work session.
Yep.
So we'll try to be doing those a little bit more as well to just get some feedback on certain things, so...
Cool. Well, good, then we'll move on to the, the final, uh, regular agenda item, which is the recommendation to approve the Harding Park, Park Improvement. And Marina is going to introduce that item. Good evening.
Good evening. All right, so I'll give this a whirl.
Aha, she passes.
She did, I passed. All right, so I just put together a few slides for you on what we are planning for Harding Park, what our improvements at that park. Um, it's the ideal time. We looked at the master plan, the Parks and Recreation Plan that was approved in February. We also looked at what was completed at Harding Park and what's currently going on, which is very exciting. And lastly, um, potential grant funding that we may receive and have received for Harding Park. So it was just the ideal park to move forward with at this time. Some of the, uh, current and completed, um, improvements include the Kayla White Memorial Playground, um, earth play mounds that were installed by DPW, um, new play structure that is currently, I'm going in as we speak, um, in the process of going in from the MDNR Grant, as well as the new walking path. Um, and lastly, we have our American in Bloom Grant that will be, um, starting now, actually. So we're in the process of planning for that and implementing that, and hopefully to have it completed by the beginning of fall, if not sooner. So if you haven't been out to Harding yet, then here's a photo of just some of the construction. It's, um, they're a lot further along now, and I know Lloyd's been out there quite a while, so he's been seeing it going on. Um, and this is, uh, the American in Bloom Plan, the revised plan. So actually, we're looking at two seating areas that we want to put in there. One is on the southeast side, we're around the playscape areas, and then on the west side, um, near Inman Street and the border along that line. And just a close-up view of the design of both seating areas. We have the sitting garden one on the left and sitting garden two on the right. So some of the park improvements that are included in the plan will include trail markers and signage to go along the walking path, um, an outdoor fitness pad with equipment. Um, we're going to add a few extra amenities to the toddler mound, um, and I'll show you some pictures shortly, just to give you a visual of what we're thinking. Um, we would like to also put emergency call box or boxes, um, because it's a large park. Improve the baseball diamond, um, water fountain upgrade, so it'll be ADA compliant, and have a few additional amenities for like water bottles, maybe even a area for dogs to drink as well. Um, park lighting is ideal and pavilion shaded structure. We do get a lot of activity at Harding Park from sports and just families, and with this new walking path and improvements, we anticipate a lot more activity, so we think it'd be a great amenity to provide to the residents to have a new pavilion. Um, and lastly, basketball court improvements as well.
What about, is the outdoor fitness equipment as part of that?
Yep, that's the second bullet.
I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you.
So these are just a few pictures of what we're thinking. Um, we had, uh, assistance from our park committee member, Robert Premier, who helped design the American in Bloom, um, redesign, and one of the seating areas... And one of the seating areas was like a twig bench. We just want something creative. It may not look exactly like this, but this is on the lines of what we're thinking. And then, of course, you got the emergency call boxes, just a few examples of the toddler mound and a mobile charging station, fitness equipment, and going to the softball games and baseball games. My staff, we actually talked to the residents and the visitors that are there, and one of the main complaints that they have is, there's no shade at this diamond. And so, you have a lot of the parents and especially grandparents having to watch the games from the car or under the tree, which is a little further out. So, we added in there as well as like a canopy type of shaded structure. And that's pretty much what the plan is. Again, there's a lot already going on, a lot that's already happened. We just want to kind of leverage on what's already happening now and what's been done to finish the improvements at Harding Park, based on what the master plan is.
Also, I meant, too, in the next meeting, I gave council a heads-up that we received some extra money from CBDD money for the county. We're also going to fund some of this stuff for Harding Park as well. So, it kind of worked out that between all of the grants that she had and more coming, that it seemed fitting to kind of conclude this park and finish it up with the grant funding that we have.
And we should, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The entire budget for this entire project, 257, that's what that number is?
That's an estimate, yes.
That's an estimate.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But you are asking for recommended approval, so is that the number that we're, you're asking us to sort of approve, or?
Yes.
Okay.
And that also includes the American in Bloom funding and the match. I kind of tried to break it up on where the funding was coming from for each of those items.
Right, okay. A is, AB is?
American Bloom and the match.
And the match. Excellent.
And that's about in line with where we're going to be going with some of the major parks, is about that price point. She's going to be, one of the things her staff has been working with Lloyd frantically as possible to try to kind of organize the master land use plan, so by the time the budget process comes this next coming year, she's going to have a whole kind of master or strategic plan of what's going to cost each park to do and navigate that.
Like capital improvement, yeah.
Yeah, and navigate that in the budget process. So, right now, we're just kind of playing a little catch-up.
Well, I'm very excited. By the way, I love that the outdoor fitness equipment is on the water, so.
I know.
Well done. But seriously, this is, this will be a dramatic improvement for.
We get our beach.
I know, we finally get the beach. For Harding Park. So, bravo. This is, this is wonderful. And, and if I'm looking at the timeline, by, all of it done by summer of '18 at least, right?
That's the plan, yes.
Yeah. Excellent. With the big asterisk she put on that. That's the plan. That's what we're holding you to, Marina, but no, it's wonderful. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to say that this is great. You know, we're moving along with the Parks Master Plan that the Parks and Rec Commission has worked so hard for the last three years on. And this is actually the first park where we're doing this level of improvement. We've done a number of little things in several other parks over the last couple of years, but this is the first large, large transformation. What I'm concerned about, or what I'm, I'd like us to keep in mind, is that with all these new amenities are going to be new costs in maintenance. So, I'm wondering if we're prepared to cover those costs of maintenance, because it's great to spend the money to put in these, these new things, and we'd hate to, after five years, they wear out, break down, they're just, you know, become useless. So, I just want to make sure that we are properly funded for maintaining these, these pieces of equipment. And that's not for anyone in particular, that's really for us.
Nope. I hear you. And that's one of the things that we've been working through with Lloyd and Joe, in the capital improvement plan, is how, how are we capturing the analysis of replacement and things of that nature? So, that will be something that the DPW and Parks and Rec are going to have to work really hard at, of kind of looking at when, can you expect the bench to be replaced, the garbage can, the equipment? That's going to be a big one. So, I think this is going to be also a good pilot, to kind of start to see, kind of use this as a catalyst of how we manage that going forward with the other parks as well.
Great. Thanks.
Can you remind me, I know it's not in here, and it's a small amenity, but I was wondering, is there a drinking fountain in this park?
Yes, there's currently one there by the ba, by the restroom.
By the restroom.
But this plan has an upgrade. I don't know if you saw it in the list.
Oh, it does.
It'll also include, it should include a doggy fountain as well for our four-legged friends to.
Yep. Well, I just wanted to, I know they were internal, but I saw the mayor of Madison Heights post their new drinking water fountains, and they have refillable, it's a refillable water. So, you, it's one of those.
Those are what's in City Hall.
The ones in City Hall, but I didn't know if that was something that we could.
Well, I believe in the, and if I didn't, I apologize, in the visual aid that I provided in your packet, it had a picture of the water fountain, or one that we're considering, and it did have the refillable water bottle, as well as a regular fountain. And then, at the bottom, there was a doggy fountain as well.
Oh, I don't think that one was in here.
I don't think, yeah.
Well, I can, I can email you a concept.
No, I just would, I'm just glad it's put in there. It's a small thing, but we, you know, remove plastic bottles from, you know.
Right.
Or we just post you from events, but.
Well, and there's a number of things, if I may interject. There's a number of things that aren't listed here, that are kind of part of what the commission has identified as a common package for every park. You know, your recycle bins, your benches, your bike repair stations, you know, those kind of things are going to be in every medium to large park. So, it's not on this list, but that's, that will be included.
Some of it's already there.
Fabulous.
So, if I may, I'm just really excited about the thinking that's going on here, the inclusive thinking, and, and I'm, I'm just really excited about this, so.
Same.
So, good work. Good work.
Me, too. Thank you. All right, a motion would be in order, then. Wait, Councilwoman, you're excited. Do you want to make the motion?
Well, I mean, Greg is on the Parks and Recreation. I thought he would like to make the motion.
I move that council approved the proposed park improvements and budget at Harding Park as recommended by the Parks and Rec Recreation Director.
I support. All right. Moved by Pollica and supported by Leaks May. Any further discussion? All right. Marnie, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Leaks May. Yes. Pollica?
Yes.
Yana?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. That was adopted. Thanks, Marina.
All right, thank you. We're very excited for this and working along with DPW. We've been working very hard to get this going, so I appreciate it.
Hey, while you're there, we're going to do a call to council, so anything else from the Recreation Department this evening?
Well, let's see. Our Come Out and Play with Parks and Rec staff has officially kicked off. We had our first outing on Saturday, and it was, I always get the name right, no matter how many times I practice, Capera?
Yes.
I think I said that right. The R is silent. And it was a great turnout. It was a lot of people that came out and participated in that. Families came out with the young kids, all the way to the adults, so that was great. And then, this Wednesday, we're going to have the Strong Man Family Affair. So, come out to Wilson Park at 5:30 to 7:00, and it's, it's an introduction to the train, Strong Man competition, but it's for all ages. It's going to be a great event. And then, following that, we have on August night, 9th, Hula Hoop in the Park, with myself and Marnie. And then, we're partnering with the library, Ferndale Library, and we're going to be partnering with their tree spouts, sprouts, reading. So, it'll be toddler reading in the park, and they'll be reading about movement and activity. And then, right after that, we're going to go right into the Hula Hoop in the Park. So, come out and join us, 10:30 for the sprout reading, 11 o'clock for Hula Hoop in the Park. And then, after that, we'll have our geocaching, which is going to be the following week. And all this is on our Facebook page, and you can, and we're sending out emails as well. And always contact Parks and Recreation Department. We'll be starting hip-hop yoga. We'll have one event that'll be happening at the Kulik Center Park area, and that will be in, in August, on Fri, the first Friday in August, I believe. Again, that's posted on Facebook. And then, lastly, again, we have our Shakespeare in the Park 12th Night, which will be in Saturday and Friday and Saturday, second Friday and Saturday, I'm sorry, the 18th and 19th, and then the following Friday and Saturday as well.
Of?
August.
August, okay.
And I think, that's all I can remember off the top of my head. There is, oh, one more big thing. We have CrossFit in the park. It's free. All these events are free. It's being held at Wilson Park on Saturday, most Saturdays throughout the summer. It started this past Saturday. And again, that was a huge event, a huge turnout. So, again, check out our Facebook page and our website, get information, come out to these free active events, bring the family, have fun.
Excellent.
I just wanted to say that I'm really impressed and glad that all of these events are happening at different parks throughout the, throughout the city, so that everyone can have the chance to participate. Maybe you can't get over to Gary, but you can get over to Harding, so I really appreciate it. Again, thank you. Thank you for the good work.
Thank you.
Excellent. Very true. All right, Police Chief Collins, anything else for the, go to the community this evening?
I have a couple of things. Thank you, Your Honor. First, a lot of people, a lot of folks in Ferndale probably don't know this. I know that the council has been briefed on this, but quite by accident, we learned the City of Ferndale Police Department has never lost an officer in the line of duty. We hope to keep that record going as long as, forever, for that matter. But we did learn just recently, actually kind of by accident, that we, that a police officer was killed in the area of Ferndale before it was Ferndale. An Oakland County Sheriff's Deputy was killed in the line of duty on August 12th, 1917, almost 100 years ago. So, we are, we have proposed to have a ceremony on that day at Nine Mile and Woodward in conjunction with the Oakland County Sheriff's Department. The sheriff will be here, will be making invitations. The Sheriff's Deputy Association's donated $4,000 to, for a brass plaque that MDOT, at least verbally, has given us permission to put there. We're waiting for the permit to come through, but we don't believe that to be a problem. The DPW has graciously been participating, and will be putting that there, and we'll unveil it on the 12th with a small ceremony. We would like to invite the public, and of course, council, for that small ceremony to commemorate that very sad event. And it will have, the whole story will be, is that will actually be on the plaque, so folks can see it from, from, and it'll be posted right near the statue that is there now for the police officer that's at the corner.
Excellent.
Secondly, we did have a meeting with the, the county. The county has requested of the Dream Cruise Committee and from the, from the state that no commercial vehicles will be allowed on Woodward Avenue on Dream Cruise Day. No trucks, no commercial vehicles whatsoever. That will be posted, and that will be published and publicized by Oakland County and by ourselves as we get closer to the date. There are security issues, as well as, I think, Woodward Dream Cruise also wants the Woodward Avenue to be there for the cruisers. We don't intend to, we intend to take trucks and send them back to, with a, with a route map to show them how they can get around. Most trucks stay, try to stay off Woodward Avenue anyway, so we don't believe it's going to be a big imposition to them, but we are going to start publicizing that. We should, we're starting now, because we're getting very close within weeks of the Dream Cruise. And lastly, I just wanted to, you'll probably hear as an off, as a, in a word, recommendation that's crossed my desk today. Over the last Friday, we had a barricade situation. The officers that responded, not only from Ferndale, but from Pleasant Ridge and from Madison Heights, handled that extremely well. It ended in nobody hurt, and the individual that was barricaded was a veteran. There was no arrest involved. He was taken directly to the hospital for observation. But the officers put themselves out there. It was dangerous to a certain extent, and they, their reaction was exemplary, and the outcome was very favorable.
Yeah. Please extend to them our congratulations and thanks. They did an outstanding job in keeping everybody, including themselves, safe, so well done. Thank you. Jenny, anything else from HR? Any future plans you want to tell us about?
I actually am coming with really exciting news. We settled our last and final labor contract last week. We settled through the mediation process with our patrol unit, our police officers, dispatchers, and detectives and specialists.
Excellent.
We're really happy and pleased with the result. They are voting this week, and we hoping to have that, we hope to have that agreement up before council on August 14th. That's it.
That's all you got to share, right?
That's all she has to share. I can share. Jenny has unfortunately tendered her resignation to take an opportunity that keeps her somewhat in Ferndale, but away from us. Really sad to lose her, but great for the opportunities that she has had. So, this is not her last meeting. She has also amazingly given us almost a six, almost eight-week notice, to be honest, to fill her position. So, you'll still see her again for a couple more meetings, but her time is dwindling, and we will miss her.
We will miss you, and we'll save our goodbyes for another meeting.
On that note, if anyone is interested in becoming the next HR Director of the same here in Ferndale.
Well done.
We are accepting applications. The whole job profile, as well as the application, is available on www.ferndalem.gov. It's a great place to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Jordan, anything else from community and economic development this evening?
Speaking of new positions, we just held our first series of phone interviews, our phone screens for the Sustainability Planner. We are thinking by sometime next week, we'll have an idea of who we're going to bring in for an in-person interview, and if this round goes well, to have somebody onboard by the end of August. So, we're really excited about that position, to really start cranking on that master plan.
Excellent. Thank you. Chief Sullivan, anything from the fire department this evening?
Nothing this evening.
Nothing this evening. Cheryl, anything from the finance department?
No.
Kara, anything from community and, and community engagement?
Community.
Communication and community engagement. Really? Awesome. The Karen Lloyd Show.
Yeah.
Well, Karen, with your permission, I'll start off. Just wanted to update the community and elected officials on where we are with recycling cart delivery.
Oh, yeah.
We have reached the 65% mark.
Got mine, too.
And they've actually had to slow down deliveries in order to keep up with the printed material that they want to deliver along with the carts, providing updated instructions. Out of the approximately 50, I think 5,600 carts that have been delivered so far to Ferndale residents, the, we've only had 40, I'm sorry, 19 properties request that they, we not deliver a cart, which I thought the number would actually be much lower, but it surprised me to see that there were 19 that just, perhaps it's, we haven't dealt with that to find out why.
Yeah.
But it may be just an issue where it might be a single person with, that doesn't produce that much recycling. And so, in the future, you'll notice, I think we're going to be seeing some increased recycling tonnage.
Let's hope so.
Which should be very, very good in time for the MRF that SAKRA is going to be building and opening as well.
So, a question about that, though, because the, the carts really stay with the house, not the individual. And so, now that house doesn't have one. And so, I know it's a, maybe a logistical issue, but is there any way to track the houses that didn't take them, so that if they sell it, that the next people don't have to pay for the cart initially?
No, they're not going to sell. They are city property for the use by the residents.
Yes.
It is paid through sanitation fund, so it is property of the city. The, they are uniquely identified, both with a serial number and with an RF tag in the carts, so we know where they're delivered. And we also will be keeping a master list as far as the properties that receive and refuse the carts.
Okay. I have a question.
Yes.
Can residents have more than one?
Can residents have more than one? Can they request more than one?
They can request a larger cart.
Even larger than the one that she sent?
Yes. They can go all the way, if they're a super recycler, they can go all the way up to, I believe it's 95 gallons, and...
I wouldn't be able to store that anywhere, I could store two, but...
Well, just like there's 19 that decided not to take the cart, there are, there'll probably be a similar amount that will end up being super recyclers and go in from there.
Through the chair, can you just share with, with the community how the recycling benefits and, and there's some sort of a, a little bit of revenue for the city based on what you recycle?
Well, it also, it helps support the program, for one thing.
Yes.
But it also, you know, personally, my, my perspective being involved in this is, you know, none of us need a landfill in every corner, you know, in order to protect the interests of future generations so that we don't all leave them dealing with our trash, you know, from a, from a personal perspective and protecting the environment, to me, that's the biggest thing of advantage. If you don't start recycling, it's kind of like the chicken or the egg scenario. If you don't start recycling at some point, then there's not a material stream available for producers or manufacturers to rely on to produce the material in recycling. I mean, and so even though it is basically a commodity, you know, if we don't start somewhere, then there, the end product won't be there. And for me, the end product, it's not really a financial advantage, I mean, although we always want to do whatever we can economically just to keep our costs down as much as possible. For me, it's a, a, an issue of, of protecting future generations and providing, you know, an environment that, that they don't have to, that we're not polluting, you know, groundwater and, and many other things. So that's, I don't want to go on a rant, so.
I know, but my question, what I really want to know is, it makes, it feels good, not, not only are we recycling, but it's a feel-good as the community's also giving back. So can you just kind of share as to how they're giving back by, by recycling? What's, I mean...
Financially?
The financial.
Oh, financial.
Yeah, well, why don't, that, that goes back to Sacra's rates, right, or how much we, we pay them?
The closer we can get to a self-sustaining financial scenario, the better off Ferndale will be. And, you know, the, certainly by the greater, the ability to recycle even greater amounts will help bring those numbers together.
Right. If I may, through the chair, just to, to add to that, so the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission has been really focusing on how to improve recycling throughout the city, not only with businesses but in our parks, but also with residential recycling. These new carts certainly help the new recycling, or the increased recycling effort of our households, of the residents. But the new Sustainability Planner that the Economic Development Team is hiring is going to be in charge, I think to some degree, helping increase the, the recycling rates with our residents. So I think there's a lot more to come from, from this, not just new carts, here you go. And so I think the impact not only will be, it'll just be better for the environment, as Lloyd said, but achieving a lot of things that our residents have wanted to do over the last couple of years.
With the, with the assistance of the Event Planner here at the city, Michael Larry, you know, the, the sign shop who handles much of the...
Speak into the...
Can you speak, yeah?
The sign shop who handles much of the events as far as management and coordinating with the, with the events coordinator here at the city. We have, in the last few months, we have really implemented a strong recycling program at our special events. And so those tonnages are really starting to show as far as what we get from special events. They actually are even sorting mixed trash, which is an unusual step that the special event coordinator has been insisting on. And so we're, we're quite pleased with the way that the special events and, and other public events are going as far as recycling.
So the Kara half of the show is?
Um, yeah, so obviously there's been a lot of conversation in our community, and I think all of the communities, with the new cart rollout. Sacra has said that they were actually a little bit surprised just by how many questions and how much conversation there is, so.
But I'm willing to bet no community communicated better or more thoughtfully than Ferndale.
I would probably tend to agree, yeah, thank you. So they have to help us out in these conversations, we certainly have the information and we can dive in and answer the questions over and over again, but they decided kind of later in the game to create a microsite specifically to support this. And so this is it, it's just up as of this week.
Oh, great.
It's called sacra recycling.org. It's just a branch of their existing website, and it's got some really great, pretty practical information. If you click cart delivery, you can actually see the percentage of how your community is doing in their delivery and where approximately you are. I know I got that for my own community.
Do that, can you click on it?
Yep, absolutely.
Now you've got me curious.
So they kind of give an update about where you would be, like how they're doing the city, and then they have a little percentage. Some cities have more, more information than others, but it's just kind of helping people to say, well, I haven't gotten mine yet, and everybody else, it's like, no, you know, we're only 12% done with this community, you know, still coming.
Okay.
And then same thing with this great mixed recycling page, it's just a really like no-nonsense kind of question and answer about what can go in the carts. There's also an FAQ that answers pretty much all the questions we've seen on social media. So we're going to start directing residents and business owners directly here when they've got questions, if they have anything above and beyond that, they can certainly talk to us.
Excellent. But you have been, you've been very on top of answering the questions, and I much appreciate it, yes. All right, we done with Kara and Lloyd Show?
Actually, I kind of had a question for Kara, but maybe you could answer it, April. Did I miss an issue of the newsletter? Because I, I haven't seen one in a while.
The newsletter is, actually, we're kind of excited about this, but the readership for the newsletter was quite low on surveys. And we've got a lot of information that people need that isn't going in there. And so we're working right now to actually transition the newsletter into also an adult and youth Parks and Recreation course catalog so that they're put together. So yes, you missed the last edition because we didn't do the last edition.
Okay.
But we are planning to relaunch in the fall with this kind of better, more enhanced, we'll have one page of news, one page of city events, the same information about city council and, and mayor, but then it will also have a few pages of what's coming up in the next quarter to a half a year, we're not quite sure how that's going to look at.
May I follow up? How did you measure whether it was being read or not?
So I did a few things. I actually created a little bit of a test group, and so we got people from different streets in every single quarter, people who are friends of the city, and, you know, then we asked their neighbors to kind of weigh in as well. So I ended up getting this test group of about 100 people, and asking when it arrived, you know, we had arrival issues as well. So when did it arrive? How did it arrive? Was it stuck in something? Was it regular? And a week later, did you read it? You know, did it go in, in the trash? Do you remember anything from it? So unfortunately, it was not super well-read. And the information that was in there, people were tending to get digitally instead. And so meanwhile, we've got Parks and Rec classes, programs, summer camps, you know, that we don't have an outlet to actually deliver to people, and it seemed like kind of a natural marriage. So obviously, no decisions have been made, we're just kind of re-appropriating that and seeing what it would look like, and then it will, it will come to you.
So you're still getting information, you're just actually getting more?
Yes, exactly.
It'll be more, you've seen other communities have those booklets.
Yeah.
We're going to be sharing the booklet with normal city business of, like in the winter, you'll, they'll get, right, like the snow removal and all that kind of stuff.
Yep, all that stuff will still be in it, we'll just have more information in there as well.
But you're making it bigger.
Little bit, yeah.
So are there going to still be four issues, or will it be down to two?
I think we're looking at costs, so all this would come as kind of a proposal when it, when it, you know, is prepared. But I'm thinking we'll end up going with three, that will keep us around the same cost and allow us not to get too far ahead of ourselves with Parks and Recreation classes, you know, obviously there's going to be kind of a sweet spot there in, in the timing.
There are a number of communities, my, my mother lives in Warren, so I can use that as an example, that utilize their water bill mailing to put an insert, a one sheet, is that an option, or is it, you know?
Yep, it sure is, it's absolutely an option. And we've, we've utilized a couple times for things that need to go to everybody. To be honest, it's, it's something that is not my number one go-to, and partly it's because it goes to people at different times. And so, but yes, you're right, that's something we probably need to utilize more and better.
Thanks.
Thanks, Kara. Marnie, anything from the Clerk's office this evening?
Nothing that I think of.
April, anything else? I'm City Manager. Dan, anything else?
I just wanted to, Mayor, at the last council meeting, Mayor Protown-Piana had asked about whether there is flexibility with respect to the ordinance on fireworks as it relates to hours. That unfortunately is restricted under state law, so it's not, we're not able at this time, based on the legislation, to amend those hours for fireworks.
Yeah, I got a lot of emails from residents after the 4th of July, like two weeks after the, the holiday, and I was sort of like, sorry, we're strapped, limited what we can do as a city council. I redirected them to call their Senator, Vincent Gregory, and Representative Robin Wittenberg to lodge their complaint. And I urge if anybody is still interested in calling them to do so, because the law won't change unless you let your representatives know.
Nothing further, Mayor.
All right. Councilwoman, anything this evening?
Uh, let's see, because I don't really have anything else, I do want to go back to my shout-outs to the businesses. So shout-out to Rouge, who just, their business is a beautiful establishment, and they just, the customer service is, is just wonderful, and I just wanted to encourage you all, if you haven't gone there, to visit them, because it's a great, great business that supports a lot of organizations as well as the community.
Yeah, great, great business, thank you. Councilman Polica?
About this week.
All right, and, uh, Mayor Protown-Piana?
Yeah, I have a couple announcements. One, I wanted to announce upcoming events that are open to residents and businesses in multiple cities, and it's a Save My City event, and this is hosted through the Michigan Municipal League in which the City of Ferndale is a member. So this is a multi-city event with partnership with Pleasant Ridge, Huntington Woods, Berkeley, Hazel Park, and Oak Park. And there are three dates for folks to come out and learn about the, or have a conversation and learn about the municipal finance situation that is causing disinvestment in our communities, and why it's important for businesses to understand why it's struggling, it's harder for cities to recover during this period of seemingly economic growth in our state, and why cities are still struggling to provide the range of services that all of their residents expect. So the three dates are August, Thursday, Wednesday, August 9th, at 7:00 PM at the Detroit Zoo at the Ford Education Center. The next night is also another one, August 10th at 7:00 PM. And then there's one, August 15th at 8:30 hosted by, sorry, 7:30 hosted at the Rust Belt Market. And so encouraging everybody to come out. And why this is important, because the Save My City is really talking about the, the multi-year disinvestment and, and revenue sharing and other revenues coming to cities, and we're restricted on what we can do in order to raise revenue to pay for the things that their residents care about. And more recently, I think the state improved a 2.5% increase into statutory revenue sharing, and it's because of what the Michigan Municipal League is doing in terms of educating our state legislators. And it's important for residents and businesses to know this, because it impacts your local tax mileage rate in order for your city to cover the gap in the funding that the state isn't providing. So while they promote low taxes up at the state, it's the city who's raising taxes because the state isn't providing their share of revenue. So it's a really interesting dance, sometimes you don't have a really great dance partner. To that end, I hope you all come out. I just want to give a shout-out to Long White Beard, as well as the Ferndale Chamber of Commerce, they had a ribbon-cutting ceremony for a new business on Laverne, and the Laverne Corridor is having, you know, a changeover in a lot of the vacant buildings there from industrial to arts and, you know, restaurants like Laverne Tap and some retail businesses. And look forward to see how their business will grow and with restored furniture. And then I just wanted to announce, because tomorrow is the filing day for candidates to run for city council and mayor, and I wanted to say that I am running for reelection for my third term, and wanted to say thank you for all the support over the last eight years from our voters who have given me the opportunity to serve the city of Ferndale. And I look forward to meeting with residents over the course of the election campaign between now and November 7th, to get to know you and you get to know me. So if you wanted to check me out, you can go to MelaniePiana.com. So, and I just wanted to say, I wanted to say thank you to April for organizing the MML event, I forgot to mention that. She has organized all of the cities together, which sometimes can be an interesting experience. So thank you for making that happen. That's it.
Great. Just a couple of quick things tonight. This Wednesday evening at 6:00 PM, our very own Crystal Proxmire is having an event at the White Castle. And if you were wondering why she would do that, it's because she got an idea and was determined to get White Castle to sponsor her website. And she's our very own Ferndale intrepid reporter, and by George, she got them to do it. So she is throwing a party at White Castle this Wednesday at 6 o'clock. There's going to be games and prizes and, I don't know, lots of fun. And come on out and support Crystal this Wednesday at 6 o'clock. And then just a second thing, earlier this evening, right before the council meeting, council had a working session on, where we deliberated changing our marijuana ordinance. And it was a lively discussion, and we had a lot of folks come out and, and talk, and we did not draw conclusions this evening, it was, this evening, earlier this evening, it was just a, a conversation where we began to discuss how we might want to change our marijuana ordinance based on the new state law that's going to go into effect on December 15th. So I say that to say, we didn't conclude that discussion, and we're probably going to have another work session in September with a goal, perhaps, of a revised ordinance by the end of the year. So if you're interested in that subject, we would still like to hear from you, so keep your eyes and ears open for some time in September. The city will get out the information when we have it available, and please let us know your thoughts. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.